Livingston's planning board notice of this meeting has been published in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Ratner?
Here.
Mr. Reber?
Here.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Wishnu?
Ms. Wishnu? Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Cucci, Ms. Bogoli, and Mr. Santola are not present. We also have our board attorney, Mr. Valerio.
Thank you. And if you can please call the first matter.
This is for a continued hearing from August 3, 2023. Minor subdivision with variances, 33 Sycamore Avenue, Block 2602, lots 29 and 30. Application number 2023-14-MSUVV for Stephen Barclay.
Thank you. Just to give a little overview on, you know, procedurally where we are, we had the first hea— we had the hearing on this matter on July 18, 2023. At that time, we had a witness testify. The public was able to cross-examine the witness. The public presented their own witness. The public then was given the opportunity to make their sworn statements under oath at the end of the hearing. The applicant made its closing statement. The board then, at the start of its deliberation, requested—or a board member requested—go see the property. And the matter was then continued until August 3. On August 3, we knew that the applicant's attorney wouldn't be there—be here. And then one of the members of the public thought that they were going to be able to make some statements. So instead of, you know, hearing a motion to reopen the evidentiary record at that time, since the applicant's attorney wasn't here, we adjourned it again till today. So here we are now on October 3. And the evidentiary record was closed back in July 18. But if I guess anyone wants to make an application to reopen the hearing, then it's—then the board will decide whether to reopen it or not. So if anybody wants to—
Could I ask a member of applicant's application?
Could, but that's a—thank you, Richard. So in lieu of the applicant's attorney, because he was unable to make it, if you can please put your appearance on the record.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Elizabeth Durkin from the Durkin—
Oh, can you—
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Elizabeth Durkin from the Durkin Firm. I'm just substituting in this evening for Brian Romanowski, the applicant's counsel.
Thank you.
I also have Mr. Keller's here this evening.
Great.
And I was previously sworn.
Yes, thank you very much. And if you testify, as you said, you've previously been sworn in.
Thank you.
So is there anybody that wants to make a motion to reopen the hearing? Yes?
I'd like to make a question.
Okay. If you can come up to the microphone, name, address, and reasons for.
My name's Deborah Pearlson. I live at 5 Bear Brook Court. I'm an adjacent homeowner behind this property. And I had a statement I'd like to make that I didn't realize I wouldn't have the opportunity to make before.
Okay. Any—so an application been made to reopen the hearing? Your position?
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the applicant, we would place an objection since the testimony was already closed and Ms. Pearlson was here at the initial application and did, my understanding is also had a planner who testified extensively before this board. The board—there was no lack of clarity in the direction and guidance given by this board to any members of the public if they would like to ask questions of any of the witnesses, to give closing arguments. I was also in attendance at that hearing. And the matter was, on my understanding, the evidentiary portion was closed. And it was just that a board member or two expressed a desire to do a physical site visit of the lot in question and asked that their vote be carried so that—to give the board members time to visit the site. Mr. Romanowski, on behalf of the applicant, didn't object to that. But that's, as I said, for—that's our understanding as to where the application stood.
I did not understand that because when it was adjourned and Mr. Santola said he wanted to look at the property, I thought we'd have another opportunity to speak.
You know, the public is here. The public was here before. I mean, I'm only speaking for myself and I'll get the board input as well. You know, I think we should, you know, be more cautious, you know. The—you know, the public that's here, you know, may not necessarily know the procedure that's normally followed. I think to cut them off may not necessarily serve, you know, certainly serve the community in not hearing what, you know, what residents have to say. But anybody else's thought?
At the last session, there were two other people who expressed that they didn't understand what had been going on and asked that we reopen the record. And I think the same app—the same aspect of concern should apply to anybody else in the public. It's a matter of our discretion. And I think in order to be understood to be as fair as we can be, we should reopen the record.
Any objection from any members of the board? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't have any opposition, but if you want to take a roll call vote, why don't we do that?
Is there a motion?
Yes, a motion and—
Mr. Klein, I'll second.
Yeah, fair to second.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Ms. Wishnu?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you give us your address?
5 Bear Brook Court.
Want to swear? I'll swear right now.
Sure. Raise your right hand. I'll swear you in. You swear the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Pearlson, and I live at 5 Bear Brook Court, the property behind 33 Sycamore Avenue, directly abutting the property in question and directly impacted by the proposed subdivision. I attended the last hearing on the requested subdivision and wanted to express my objection to the application. The applicant is asking this board to grant variances to create two grossly undersized development lots and a side yard variance on proposed Lot 30 at approximately half the required minimum setback, both of which would be direct results of the proposed subdivision. I did not hear any justification to support the variance relief requested, other than the applicant's desire to create an additional development lot for his own personal financial gain. Financial personal gain is not a basis for granting the relief, nor is the fact that the applicant may be a contributing member of the community, which was also offered as a reason to support the variances. The basis for granting the variances must be rooted in the municipal land use law. As the zoning board determined in 2020, the two lots comprising the subject property were merged by operation of law for a reason and have functioned as one lot since the 1950s for 70 years now. As I understand it, the law seeks to eliminate non-conforming zoning conditions, not create new ones. To create these new non-conformities, the applicant must show that if the variance relief is not granted, he will suffer an undue hardship due to existing conditions that uniquely affect this property, such as topography. That certainly was not established. Any hardship to the applicant would actually be a self-created one by intentionally and purposely creating the undersized lots. Alternately, the applicant must demonstrate that the purposes of the municipal land use law will be advanced by the granting of the variances. Again, that has not been established. To the contrary, and speaking as the adjacent homeowner, the granting of the variances would undermine several purposes of the municipal land use law pursuant to NJSA 4055D2. Among those purposes are A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of lands in a manner which will promote safety and general welfare; B, to secure safety from flood; C, to provide adequate light air and open space; D, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and preservation of the environment. Allowing the applicant to squeeze another home onto the property by approving this application to create two exceptionally undersized lots, with proposed Lot 29 being the smallest on the block, is not appropriate development. It also would not contribute to the well-being of the neighborhood. Additionally, if you look at the topography of the properties, the subject property on Sycamore is on a hill sloping down toward our property. We have had a lot of problems with flooding from runoff onto our property through the years and have had to install multiple drainage systems that have cost in the tens of thousands of dollars. Despite that, we still suffered from runoff flooding during Hurricane Ida last year. Creating more impervious surface by building a home on that small parcel will very likely cause greater flooding issues for us, which would be a hardship to us caused directly by granting this application. In addition, a home built on a substantially undersized lot would invariably be an obstruction to our light air and open space. Not only would there be the additional height and massing of the new home on the undersized lot, but granting the inappropriate side yard setback requested by the applicant and allowing the two homes to be placed so close together would further exacerbate the obstruction to our light and air. And to this point, I want to address a comment made by a board member at the prior meeting. He asked if the affected homeowners, us, would prefer a 1,900 square foot home on a smaller parcel or a McMansion. I view this issue differently. Should the existing home be knocked down and the property developed with a new home, there are zoning mechanisms, as you know, that the township has adopted to regulate McMansions. Any new home would have to abide by the maximum habitable floor area and habitable floor area ratio for the district, among the other building standards for the district that have been implemented to avoid overdevelopment. Additionally, in the application in 2019 by the developer for Lot 29, who I am assuming is the same developer since their attorney was present at the last meeting, is present at this meeting, they were seeking significant variances, including for height and elimination of almost the entire rear yard setback. I believe they were claiming hardship, again, based on the self-imposed obstacles this severely undersized lot would create. If this variance is granted, I am certain the developer will look to try and build a house that isn't appropriate for the space. So we would clearly prefer a home that meets the township's building standards, sits appropriately on a larger parcel of land that conforms to the current zoning, and does not adversely affect our light, air, open space, and drainage concerns. For these reasons, the applicant has not satisfied the positive criteria for granting any of the variances requested. Now, looking to the negative criteria, the applicant must prove that the variances can be granted without causing a substantial detriment to the public good, zone plan, or zoning ordinance. He has not. Granting the variances would most certainly cause a substantial detriment to the public good by creating undersized lots that are out of character with the neighborhood. If you look at the area map on the applicant's plan, you can see the general neighborhood and the R3 district consists of a number of nice large lots. And while there may be some smaller lots along Sycamore—I don't remember the exact number stated at the last meeting—but something like half or more of the parcels on Sycamore that the homeowner was claiming were undersized lots did not actually fall below the minimum required lot size. And if you look at the parcels that are undersized, they tend to go deep in the back, so the homes are not on top of each other. Moreover, the granting of the application would substantially impact the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The smaller parcels on Sycamore were built sometime in the 1940s or so, before the R3 zoning was in place. Since the zoning was put in place, you have seen the elimination of smaller lots. Sycamore Avenue is seeing such a growth in recent years, with larger homes on nice parcels of property, which is exactly the intent of the zoning ordinance that has been adopted by the township. The subject parcel of land has functioned as a single lot since the 1950s. The fact that the taxing authority billed it as two separate lots, as pointed out also at a prior meeting, is irrelevant. That's a ministerial accounting function and has nothing to do with how the lot should be viewed. Approving the requested subdivision and allowing the property to revert back to a development scheme that was common in the 1940s would completely undermine the R3 zoning standards enacted by the township. Clearly, that is not what the township desires. As Mr. Maranski, our professional planner, testified at that prior hearing, while the township's master plan has recommended reducing the lot area in some sections of the R3 district, this area was not one of them. In sum, there is absolutely no benefit for the granting of this application, other than the applicant's financial benefit. I implore this board to preserve the character of the neighborhood and uphold the zoning standards adopted by the town council by denying this application. Thank you.
Thank you. So this really comes down—I think we talked about this before—it really comes down to a benefit detriment, you know, part of the analysis. I don't know if anything that you need to—
I think we just— I don't know. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Just one important clarification based on the testimony that Mrs. Pearlson just gave. I don't believe the applicant testified as hardship as a reason. I believe it's a C2 variance. Mr. Keller can confirm that.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Keller respond, so I think we have maybe somebody else that wants to come up. Yes, sir.
Can we reopen the hearing? I can make—
Yeah, name and address, please.
Yep. My name is Yan Zhong Nu, Y-A-N-Z-H-O-N-G. Last name N-I-U. I live in—
I heard Y-A-N.
I'm sorry?
I heard Y-A-N. I didn't hear the rest.
Y-A-N-Z-H-O-N-G. That's my first name and last name N-I-U. I live in 6 Arlington Drive. My father-in-law, he lives next to the lot in question. We own the property and—
If—you want to swear, man, Richard?
Yeah, let me swear you in. Raise your right hand. And you swear the testimony about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Give us your full name and your address.
Yep. Full name is Yan Zhong Nu. Y-A-N-Z-H-O-N-G is the first name. Last name N-I-U, Nu. And my address is 6 Arlington Drive, Livingston, New Jersey.
All right, you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Dear board members and the staff, I've lived in Livingston since 2011, and this is my adopted hometown in the States. My wife and I love the town so much that we helped my father-in-law move here after my mother-in-law passed away. We want him to have a wonderful, and most importantly, peaceful life near us. His house is right next to the subject lot. I urge the board to deny this application. First of all, the letter sent by the applicant to neighbors notifying about the hearing understated the severity of the application and gave recipients the impression that it was a procedural approval involving a minor variance only related to the house already on Lot Number 30, I believe. I only understood the materiality of the application during the first hearing. By the way, we also actually went to the township before the first hearing, trying to understand the, you know, the content of the application. We went away—we left with the impression that still it's a procedural approval. That's after the, you know, the explanation of staff members. So there is obviously confusion about what's being, you know, applied even before the first hearing. So I—I'm probably not the only one who was misled after reading the notification letter. If the letter had been more transparent, I'm almost certain more neighbors would have shown up. Since interested parties were not fully present at these hearings, I question whether we are clear about the real concerns of the public. Secondly, this application is simply part of a bait-and-switch tactic to salvage the lot sale in 2018. I urge the board not to fall for it. As we just heard, actually, the key witness of the applicant, Mr. Keller, was also involved. Was that—is it correct that you were involved in the variance of application for the buyer of this property in 2020? Were you involved?
I don't believe so.
Okay, okay. Never mind.
I don't believe that I was involved.
But were you aware of the—that variance application in 2020?
I was personally involved. I don't know if I was with my firm or—
Okay. Oh, you—it could be that your firm's person actually worked on this.
I—we did not work on a variance. I don't want—
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
I can't say for sure, but I—I—
Understood.
—that we worked on that application or do I have any knowledge? I'm the president of the firm.
Okay. Let me remind you that during the last hearing, the applicant's key witness, Mr. Keller, evaded my question about whether a 1,900 square foot house would be economically viable for the buyer of the lot. Mr. Keller responded to my question by stating such a house would have a market value. Anything can have a market value. That was not the point. Mr. Keller evaded my question because he knows fully well, as everyone in this room, that in today's market, a 1,900 square foot house on a lot that costs 229K, which has and will incur significant legal and professional fees, means a short loss, and no investor will do that. I ran the numbers. To make a profit, the buyer will need to build a much bigger house, a 1,900 square foot house. To break even, the buyer needs to build at least 2,800 square foot. This is not speculation because the buyer of the lot actually went to the zoning board for significant variances before the lot merging issue was discovered. Mr. Keller showed an envelope on the lot in the shape of a parallelogram, not rectangle, during the last hearing. And tried to paint a picture so that you would imagine a small house on a small lot that's consistent with the existing houses to the south of the lot. Please do not be misled. The moment you approve the subdivision, the buyer will refile the variance application to build a house that will be way beyond the envelope shown by Mr. Keller. It would be a house that's stuffed on that little tiny lot, having little setback in every single direction, inconsistent with the style of the neighborhood, either to the south or north of the lot. It's criti—it is crystal clear that the subdivision would not serve any public good. Thirdly, if you approve this subdivision, it will cause a long, drawn-out hardship for three families: my father-in-law, my own family, and Mr. and Mrs. Pearlson's family. Because we will need to hire attorneys and engineers, get off work early to make zoning variance hearings while leaving young kids at home. Before the lot merge issue was discovered, the buyer of the lot delayed the zoning variance hearings so many times in apparent attempt to exhaust people who might be against their application. The buyer—as a result, we actually couldn't make the 2020 hearing because, you know, we —it's—we had to leave for vacation.
Can we just focus on the application here?
Yeah, and there was—you know—
Please.
And just for clarification, because I have no idea what this gentleman is testifying to, and just—I'm going to place an objection to—I'm just not sure where he's going. And it's getting to the point where it's quite offensive to the applicant in the couching the testimony. There was no pending app—there was no application or testimony other than this application for this board regarding this issue. The previous application, we had spoken to your attorney, and we had written—the Pearlsons had to hire counsel. Mr. Pearlson's an attorney, and an attorney in his firm. Linda John—Lisa John wrote memorandums, as did I. And your counsel said because they couldn't find the perfected subdivision, this board lacked jurisdiction to hear the application. So the application never moved forward before this board. So I have no idea what this gentleman is speaking to. All I can tell you is I represented the applicant at that stage. This is just not truthful.
Which part was not truthful?
If we can just focus on this application and not speculation as to what another board may do—
Of course, of course. Now, the buyer's sole job is to develop properties, so handling such hearings is part of their job. We, on the other hand, have full-time jobs and significant family obligations.
I'm sorry? I'm sorry, but this is—it is offensive, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry, keep quiet, but let's stick to the rules of the law.
Please, Mr. Barclay, please.
I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the buyer, not the seller. So I—I—
Let's just focus on the—because we don't have a—this is a—
I'm almost done.
Okay, this is a subdivision. We're not dealing with the buyer. We're not dealing with the seller here.
The history that these two prior laws were separated is mere history. These three families living today and an approval of the subdivision will cause real misery to our lives. In the meantime, I believe we all have sympathy for Mr. Barclay for his difficulty in monetizing the extra lot he had been owning. Subdivision, however, is not the best way to monetize his holdings while enhancing public good. The merged lot is in compliance with the size requirement for R3 zone, and its topographic features will allow a large walkout basement that's not included in the habitable inhabitable area calculation. A developer can build a nice two-level house within the 3,500 square foot habitable area limit for R3 while having another probably 1,500 square foot basement not visible from the front and leveraging the existing circular driveway, and the developer would not need—
I think we can't—we're not here to speculate as to what, you know, is not there. What can—you know, we can talk about a million things that may go there if approved or if not approved.
Sure.
You know, if it's not, you know, if it's not approved, we can speculate as to that as well, and I don't think we're here to do that.
Okay. Then to—I—that's basically—I'm going to conclude, right? I urge the board to deny this application. That's all. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. So the hearing has been reopened? Response, comments?
I just—
And Mr. Keller, you're still under oath?
Yes.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify a couple of points. One is, we did not argue a C1 hardship variance. We argued C2, that—it was more appropriate to have a—two smaller houses on the lot than one larger home, and that it was consistent with the immediate neighborhood as defined by your ordinance, properties within 400 feet on the same side of the street. I heard a lot of mention about, you know, some of these lots being deeper. Again, we talked about that last time. That's not perceived from the street. So if a lot is 300 feet deep or 100 feet deep, what you see when you go down the street is a 60-foot-wide street. With regard to airlight and open space, we are not proposing a new house, but certainly we did show a building envelope. There was nothing deceptive about it. Those are the setbacks that are required. We didn't show a home or a footprint or say that that angled—the angled building envelope is a function of the geometry of the lot. And any new house meeting the side yard, front yard, and rear yard setbacks would have to fit into that. We're not proposing a house that violates that. But we did show the envelope, so it was a way to the board of where a house could be placed on it. And since we're anticipating that any house would be fully compliant with the side yard setbacks, and we also indicated because of the geometry of the lot and the fact that it's plays out, it actually has a wider lot than the 60-foot frontage at the street because of the way that the geometry of the lot. So there's no reason to believe that our house is going to encroach on any of those setback lines and steal any airlight and open space if we're meeting the setback requirements. The—there was also some issue about drainage. Again, there's no indication that whether we put a single house with a tennis court and a sport court on this, or we put two smaller houses with some patios and some accessory structures, there's no relationship to the building cover—the amount of lot coverage that will go on these properties. And as stated earlier, you have a very diligent engineering department with very strict regulations that require us to manage that drainage. So whether it's a one lot, one house, two houses, drainage is really immaterial, so it's somewhat of a red herring, regardless of which way the topography goes. With regard to the Mr. Nu's testimony, I understand people's passion. They don't like change. There's a house that could go next to them. They bought a piece of property that had a bunch of trees on it, and they don't want to see those go away. However, that property owner does have some rights. What I do really resent was the notion that I was being evasive. I'm not a real estate expert. I can't speculate with any authority as to the value of a home. I can indicate—I can indicate that when we—the house on the left has a property value. If the property on the right was developed with a similar-sized house, I'm sure it would have a sales value. I'm not—I can't speculate what rate of return an investor wants to see on their money, nor can the objector. I certainly didn't—I wasn't deceitful, and I didn't evade. What I showed, and I continue to show on the drawing, was the setback lines. That's a building envelope. It's not meant to represent a house. I think that, again, drainage, the size of the house, the height of the house, whether it's one house or two, it's going to be—it's going to be the same height, or the same height ordinances, the same overall coverage allows, the same controls, the same side yard, rear yard setbacks, all control. So there's really no impact on airlight and open space. What we argued was, for this neighborhood, we showed that this property was consistent with most of the neighborhood. And I think for the board members who—I was able to go back out to the property and take a look. And yeah, if you go around the corner, you turn the corner, it's a different neighborhood. If you go onto Bear Brook or some of the other streets around. But when you look at—you stand in front of this house, you look at the house across the street, you see that this is not an inconsistent development, and we think it's more appropriate to have two smaller homes than one oversized. We think it's consistent with the fabric of the neighborhood, which is why your ordinance mentions a standard for looking at the neighborhood. We still think that it's a valid application. Their own planner did not did not bring up any sort of C1 standards that we were quoting. A lot—there was a lot of cherry-picking, I heard, and was a very good analysis of certain certain aspects of municipal land use law, but not ones that we represented here before you. We think it's a, it's a solid C2 variance, where the benefits outweigh the detriments, and we think that any of the negatives that might be associated with it are what go along with the development of any home, and they'll certainly be mitigated by your township engineering requirements as well as building department requirements. As to any speculation about what house might go on there, I never worked on a house on this project, on this property, we're dealing with a subdivision, which is a line between two properties, and we're looking to establish to go back to the fabric of the neighborhood from the 1930s. We're not, we're not looking to re-establish 1930 zoning, we're saying that's part of the fabric of the neighborhood, and we're asking this board to allow us to put that line back and develop a house, and allow the development of a house that's appropriate and not an oversized mansion.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Mr. Keller, perhaps you want to review the engineering department memorandum of May 9th, particularly paragraph 8, which deals with drainage? You might want to go over that? Because of...
Yeah.
Compliance with the conditions of this report would be necessary if the board approves it.
Yeah, I think at the last time, after some, some public testimony, I did offer that we intend to fully comply with all of the recommendations from Mr. Marucci in that memorandum of May 9th. And again, I think the objector's planner brought that we should have done these as part of the subdivision, and I said, these are sort of pro forma requirements that your engineering reminds us that is a condition of any building permit, should this board approve the project, as a condition of any building permit and grading permit, we would need to meet these requirements, and we certainly would. All of the, all of the requirements.
Are there any questions from the board members before I go back to the public and see if they have any questions for the witness? Do you have any further questions for the witness? Any, any closing remarks?
No, I believe Mr. Romanowski had made the closing remarks in the July hearing, so I'm good. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so absent objection and the absence of any motion for a continuance, the evidentiary record is closed, and no further testimony or evidence shall be heard or received. The board members now have the opportunity to state there and discuss their views on this application prior to a decision. Any comments from any members of the board?
I want to offer a couple of things by way of explanation, and that is, first of all, what we have before us is an application for subdivision. Sometimes, somebody will come in with an application for subdivision and for approval of a specific house. That's not before us, we're not considering a house today, we're only considering whether or not a case has been made to subdivide the lot. Now, when we do that, we have to consider what the neighborhood is, and we all have personal views as to what we see as a neighborhood, but we have a legal standard that we have to apply. And the legal standard is that we only look at the two sides of the street that the property faces. We may not look anyplace else. Then there is a standard that says you only look a certain distance from that site in order to make your comparison. The law says you look 400 feet in each direction, or you look to the closest intersections. They've pretty well made that kind of analysis. They don't meet the 60% standard, although they're very close to it in one of those analyses. Now, one of the things that the board has to look at is, does that mean we have to say no, or does it still mean that there's an opportunity for the board to say yes? And the law says that that standard is guidance, it doesn't say we must do that. The most important thing on a subdivision is whether or not what is being proposed in terms of the size of the lot within certain specific distances from the street is consistent with the character and fabric of the neighborhood as defined in the ordinance, not as how we think the neighborhood should be determined. And those are the things that the board has to weigh in arriving at a yea or a nay on the application. Now, there's another factor. Both parties had experts on planning, and they both gave extensive testimony, and the board's going to have to decide which of those testimonies we give the greatest weight to. And in opposing the application, Plater Maransky referenced the 2018 master plan and said that it had a recommendation as to this specific area, the small neighborhood in the R3 zone, or any small neighborhood in the R3 zone, and said that consideration should be given to rezoning. He didn't quite cover the whole recommendation. There are several of us up here who are members of the planning board when that master plan was adopted, so we know what it was. And it said consideration should be given to rezoning to the R4 or a new district, not to R3. Those are important words, and ones we have to keep in mind, because the concern of the planning board members at that time was preserving the small neighborhood in terms of character. So understand, whether we say yea or nay, we're going to be doing it within that framework. I'm not planning to drop a bomb at this point, but I think those are the things that the members have to think about. And remember also that there is testimony that a house could be built on the portion of the property which is now the driveway and a few other things, and that it could be built of approximately the same size of the present house. And what's interesting, if I can find my note on that, is that there's only a difference of a couple hundred square feet between the two potential houses, and in the R4 zone, the size permitted is very close. It's 9,375 square feet within the required distance from the street. And on these lots, it's 9,000 or 9,158 feet. So if we're looking at the master plan's recommendation that you try to get close to the R4 zone, it tells me that this might do it. So we've got to make a difficult decision as to what our answer is. I yield.
Yield the rest of your time, Peter, thank you. Any other thoughts by any of the members? Richard?
Not to disappoint Mr. Reber, I'll have a comment. I understand that, especially within a neighborhood, nobody likes change. Status quo is what everybody likes, but as we look around our community, we see more change than we maybe care to see in a number of areas. And as Mr. Klein pointed out very, very well, the, the, the character of the neighborhood, I do not believe will be changed dramatically by granting this subdivision, that the, the case for the variance was, was made, I don't think that the contrary opinion of the other planner changed that, and I, I believe that the, the variances are, that are being asked are, again, as compared to the R4, which was the area that we should be looking at, and as one of the people that were here when that master plan was adopted, are not very significant, and I believe that the, I would approve, I would vote for approval of the subdivision.
Any other, yes?
Well, I don't want to disappoint Mr. Diner, but we have seen here over the years many proposals, and it's not a blanket yes to every subdivision, we've, we've denied many. This is, I don't think, one that should be denied either, it fits almost everything on that street, I think it's been presented in a good way. I'm with, I'm with everybody, I don't know how, someone's proposing, proposing a monster few hundred apartments right behind me, I'm not going to be too happy about it, but if it fits, it fits, and if it's compliant, it's compliant, so this board really takes it very, it takes everyone's opinion very seriously, and at the end of the day, I think it fits, I don't think this is just, once again, it is procedural, it is just a subdivision, and there will be a time where if someone wants to build a house, they'll have to be back and make sure it's right, so I would be in favor of it.
Thank you.
Nothing substantive particularly, I just did want to, before we take any action, put on the record, because I didn't get a chance to certify yet, I was not here at the August 3 hearing, but I did watch the tape, I'm not sure that it was required because there was no testimony or evidence taken, but it was a hearing on this application, so in an abundance caution, I just want to put on the record that I did watch the videotape.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm in the same situation, I also was not here, I also watched the tape, and I also, you know, as Mr. Klein put it so perfectly, as he always does, we have to abide by the law and the framework that we're given. Sometimes that's not easy, but that's the way we have to look at it, so I'm also in support.
Thank you, Jill. The board members, having completed the discussion, is appropriate to determine how to, whether proceed by motion to approve or disapprove, or to give non-Biden guidance to our attorney. So is there a motion to...
I'd make a motion to approve, subject to a memorializing resolution. I do that because for all of the months that this has been before us, I think everybody deserves knowing what our decision is as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
I would second the motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Klein and a second by Mr. Diner. Catherine, if you can please take the roll?
Mr. Klein?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Diner?
Yes.
Mr. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Reber?
Yes.
Ms. Wischnew?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That ends the hearing, that is all that we have on the agenda for this evening, so we are now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. We just want to thank you very much, and thank you very much to the board for their consideration of this application.
Thank you.
Thank you for your...
Okay, thank you.
And watch for any notice about a house being built on that property, because I'm sure you want to participate.